Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Lake Clark Shore's workshop on March 16th, 2023. We'll start out with the call to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul Schalhoope, Vice Mayor Robert Schalhoope, President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold,
Here.
Councilmember Bautine Rodriguez, Councilmember Robert Gonzalez.
Here.
Again, welcome, everybody. Let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We're here tonight to talk about ordinance 125 hyphen six and seven six seven.
Thank you, Bob.
And I thought, well, let me know if y'all can't hear my voice. We thought we'd let you know what we've been doing. We put together a slideshow for everyone tonight, and it's going to be talking about boats, trailers. We're going to be talking about those that are in compliance, those that are not in compliance based upon the current code, and want you to have an appreciation of where we are in this process. Please also appreciate the fact that this is our second attempt at trying to get it right, so to speak. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it on over to Mr. Scheck, our attorney, to give you a brief overview of the current situation. Mr. Scheck.
Good evening. The section of the code that we're dealing with, as Mr. Schalhoope mentioned, is chapter 125. It's part of the zoning code, and it's subsection 767, parking of specified vehicles in residential districts. The way the code is written currently, it commingles what's permitted with what's not permitted, and you have to read it a couple of times to dissect and kind of outline what's permitted and what's allowed. So I will try to summarize it without reading the sections in the code. The current code provides for screening, and the current code provides that that screening should be opaque, obscured, or and that the vehicle, whether it's a trailer, a boat, a commercial vehicle, that it be obscured or concealed behind a fence or a hedge. The current code allows for watercraft and trailers, boats and trailers, if you will. It allows for more than one, so you can have multiple boats and multiple boat trailers. But the maximum length per each trailer or boat is 30 feet, and the aggregate length, the combined length, is 55 feet. You can't have two 30-feet boats or trailers, but you could have a 30-foot and a 25-foot under the current code, and of course, anything less than that. Trailers, utility and cargo trailers. The current code allows for one. It provides for a maximum height of 10 feet and a maximum length of 20 feet. For recreational vehicles, the current code provides that you may have one, maximum length 45 feet. And for commercial vehicles, you can have one, but it must be less than one ton. The next size vehicle down from one ton is a three-quarter-ton vehicle. So based on the current vehicle sizes, you cannot have a one-ton truck, but you could have a three-quarter-ton truck. That's the current code. The code hasn't always been enforced uniformly, and I think that has added to some of the confusion and some of the issues. But we now need to decide what we want to do to address the issue of multiple trailers, vehicles, and boats on residential property. The code does provide that they should be behind the front line of the house, not in the front yard. And there are, most residents in the town do comply with that, but not all. The other issue that we will have to address is how close can it be to your property line? We have side yard setbacks. The purpose of the side yard setbacks is for openness, for air, for light. And in some cases, we have recreational vehicles that are parked right on the property line, and those recreational vehicles are as tall as the wall of the house. So it could be somewhat obtrusive. In most cases, the neighbors don't complain because it's not omitting any smells and it's not creating any loud noises, so it's pretty much ignored and allowed to be there. One of the ordinances that was presented to the council several months ago provided that we had to be three feet from the property line. That creates problems for some people because the side yards aren't wide enough to allow for the trailer to be three feet from the property line because it can't fit because of the wall of the house being closer and the vehicle being too wide. So that's one of the issues we'll also have to discuss. Are there any questions of the council?
Mr. Gonzalez?
No, Charlie, thank you.
Mr. Redries? Charlie, you did a pretty good job. Mr. Lubello, welcome.
Thank you. We have a screen. We have a little presentation we're going to present to you that staff has presented. Give you a little baseline of what's in compliance and what's not in compliance. So let's start. This is in compliance. As you can see, it's behind the property line and it's screened. I'm going to go through them quickly. This is also in compliance. It's beyond the property line, and everything looks good with that one also. This is not in compliance. As you can see, it's not behind the building, and it's not. This is obviously not in compliance because it's in the front yard. This is obviously not in compliance also. It's not stored in a carport, not behind the building line. This is obviously not in compliance, front yard.
May I stop you there, Mr. Lubello?
Sure. Which one? That one?
That one right there. Is that a corner lot?
Yes. That's on Venetian. That's on the east.
So that's a side yard. That's a side yard, but it's a corner lot?
Yes.
I didn't mean to.
No, I can't tell either, but no, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Continue. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Lubello.
No, not at all. This is obviously not in compliance, no screening. This is, what is wrong with this?
This one has the gate in the front, but there's no fence. There's no screening on the side.
It's not four-sided screen?
Well, it has to be two-sided.
Two-sided. This is not because it's, I guess, because it's not okay. Not in compliance. Now, on to utility trailers. This one is in compliance. It's in a carport, behind the building. This one is not in compliance, and please explain why, because I can't see it.
It's not screened or it's not underneath a carport.
Okay. Thank you. This one is obviously not compliance. It's not screened. Now, commercial vehicles. Charlie already went over it. This one is in compliance, which is confusing because it's more than one ton, but.
We don't see if there's commercial markings on it, and so the code says.
All right, speak into the microphone.
The code said it has to be both. It's not or, it's and.
So it also has to have commercial markings, and it has to exceed one ton. So that is a little confusing. This is obviously not in compliance, no screening, many vehicles over the one ton, and it's not behind the building line. This is not in compliance. It exceeds the one ton, and it's not stored in the carport, not screened, all the issues. This one is obviously super-duty truck, heavy-duty. It's those terminologies, more than one ton. So that's, and it has advertising on it. Correct.
What, Joe, I apologize, Mr. Lubello, what is that, a 2,500 or a 3,500 truck?
It's, I think it could be either. I think.
One ton is a 3,500 series.
So Mr.
Okay, thanks, Tim. So it's.
And Mr. Lubello, the only reason, I mean, this is, grew up in the car business. The 2,500 and the 3,500 look eerily similar, and that looks like a 2,500 that looks like a three-quarter ton.
Yeah.
It doesn't have official classifications or what lane in terms we give them. There is DOT classification for eight, five, one, two.
Up to six.
It's, that part of the code is confusing, correct? Because of the one ton. It could, heavy-duty, light, you know, all these, super-duty does not mean it's over one ton.
And then, here's something else you also know, the designation change all the time, okay? What is now a three-quarter-ton vehicle now is not a three-quarter ton of the past. What is three-quarter ton now is a heavy pack, okay? And that's another issue that we don't address.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, recreational vehicles. This one is in compliance. Obviously, you can see it's behind a fence, and it's behind the building. This one is also in compliance, same. It's. This one is not in compliance. It's obviously not screened, but it is behind the building. Not in compliance. Obviously, it's not screened. It's not in a carport, but it is behind the building. Okay, combination. This is obviously not in compliance, no screening, no, it is behind the building, I believe. But, and it may be more than one utility trailer. This is not in compliance because it's not stored. It's hard to see, but it's not stored in a carport. Also, there's two or more trailers, and it's not screened. Corner lots. This is obviously not screened, not in a carport, not. That's it. So we can use these for reference as a baseline of what's in. Compliance.
Audience comments, please. All right, why don't you come on up?
That's good. Our Zoom friends.
Jeff Shagan, 8121 Pine Tree. So I have a list of statements and questions, but on the first page of that, there was a boat thing. It's because it wasn't in a carport. So what does a carport have to do with this? Because I thought it was just going to be behind the front edge of the house, fencing, and we were talking about opaque or not.
The code allows for the vehicles to be placed in a carport, and that brings them into compliance. If they're not in the carport and they're on a side yard, then they have to be screened.
So if it's on a non, so if it's on a side yard in a carport, it doesn't.
If it's in a carport. My reading of the code is that the carport does not have to be screened because it is in the carport, and I think there's a picture of that here.
It still has to be behind the building.
It has to be behind the front line of the building.
Front line of the house.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. If you go into the PowerPoint, several pages, there's a picture of three vehicles parked in the driveway and a trailer behind the one vehicle, and it's in a carport. It's not screened except by the vehicle that's parked in front of it, but it's in compliance because it's in the carport and behind the.
We don't want to do fencing for whatever reason. We could erect the carport.
Except that you can't erect the carport in the side yard setback. It has to be further in from the property. Depending on where you live, it's 10 feet or 15 feet from the property line. And the difference is that if it's in a carport, it's not going to be in the side yard. It's going to be in the footprint of the building itself, which meets setback requirements.
So this picture that you're referring to doesn't look like it's 10.
The setbacks vary in our code. Let me find the picture again. And it's also possible that someone received a variance from the side yard setback. In some places, the size of the lots, it's a percentage, so it could be less than that. The side yard setback throughout the town is not uniform. It varies.
All right. Y'all don't mind, I guess I'll go ahead.
This, talk to us.
Right off the bat, I'm in favor of parking trailers being a, to retrofit yard, yards with opaque fences and gates. And then I got a series of points that.
Well, I think you. I think you'd be surprised that there's going to be a lot of us that probably. How about this? I agree with.
Thank you.
And I think we put this up here. This is our notes from the last time. So what I wanted to make sure we do is to, for y'all to appreciate, this is what we heard. This is, we wrote it down, and I'm trying not to compound it. If we've already addressed it and it's up there, we got you covered. Let's, I want to hear something we haven't heard before.
I will skip some points, but there's one that I want to bring up that I made at the last workshop that's not up there. And that has to do with septic tank and drain field being in a location that would make erecting a fence and a gate challenging, it's not impossible. Obviously, putting a hedge in that same location would be detrimental to the drain field. Somebody.
Charlie, will you make a note of that? Thank you.
A caller during the last workshop mentioned wanting opaque fencing so that they didn't see the homeowners boating paraphernalia on the ground. And I wanted to question, instead of mandating opaque fencing and gates, could that be possibly a code enforcement related issue?
First thing that comes to mind is open storage, and I think that open storage issue is addressed by the code. So I think it might be a concern for the code enforcement officer to take a look at it. Because I think if it's open storage like that, I think that might be a violation, but that's not my sandbox.
Okay. And then.
Because I think if you take a look at some of the pictures that we have here, you see open storage. And I'm sitting there going, well, okay, we're talking about a trailer or a vehicle. Let's look at the open storage.
And then I'll just summarize. Then the screen, the opaque fencing and the gates makes the everyday use of your property non-enjoyable if you have to open up a big gate versus just a small pedestrian gate. So I got plenty more, but those are, that's the high.
I appreciate it.
Jeff, may your comment on carports, did you say that that would not be important to you in the code?
To me personally, it gives me an option to explore. I did not know that that was a possibility, because we did, we did put a shed on our property.
Okay.
We were told for a shed. Side.
Right.
So if the carport happens to be a three-foot setback from the side, maybe I could use that as an option, except for one of the posts, I'd have to get a variation because it'd be two, because the driveway curves.
Got you. Thank you.
Just want to be recognized by the chair. Thank you. I just wanted to make a reference or just a reminder. I noticed you had a lot of nice typed notes, and if anybody has typed notes like that and wants to share it with us, you know, if you CC all of us, we can't respond all at once, but please be sure that we are getting those. It doesn't have to be an essay on why you should or should not want a particular thing, even if they're just bullet points of things. We see that. We really take that into consideration, and I, you know, I've had a couple residents send that to me in anticipation of the workshop, so I appreciate that.
We'll make that as part of the record and make sure that everyone gets a copy of that, okay? Mr. Maples, what are your thoughts? Come on up. You've been walking the neighborhood. I'm curious to know what you've heard.
First, good evening, everyone. Councilman.
President, neighbors.
Well, at the moment, Bob, I have been walking the neighborhood, but I'm listening, and I don't feel like sharing right now at the moment. But as I get more details, I'll be sure to share.
Okay.
If we come along.
I wanted to give you that opportunity.
Joe Lopez, 7130 Venetian. I had given Mr. Gonzalez a list of kind of my thoughts on kind of thought that maybe adding to the list that doesn't repeat any, it has to do with maybe using, we kind of hit on it, DOT or other descriptions of items, especially when it comes to things like height and width. You know, the DOT is very specific about, you know, 13 foot six maximum height, 10 foot maximum width, but having to go with wide loads, things like that nature. Reason I know is I have a boat that fits into that category. And so knowing those sorts of things, like, because when you look at some of the types of trailers, like a cargo trailer, we have a length and a height restriction on it. But to me, when I look at things, I don't see that as any different than a 40-something-foot travel trailer that's parked on someone's house. So why should someone that decides to store tools in a trailer be penalized versus someone that can now put in ATV or a four-by-four and just so happens to have a bed in that trailer? Why is it any different? Because honestly, the travel trailer or toy hauler is larger than a cargo trailer if it's for residential use. So maybe just putting a, you know, when it comes to those sort of things, not penalizing or putting restrictions on the types of things, but almost like a general, you know, size, you know, so that it's, okay, as long as your trailer, whatever, it's an RV or a toy hauler or a cargo trailer or a smoker, you know, as long as it fits within a certain size, not differentiating between them, and maybe using some of those DOT class limits for things instead of, you know, using the monikers that are in the code, because it is confusing on what is a one-ton. And it still be. What we call things now means nothing compared to when this was written.
Well. Is, I can appreciate it, is that they wanted to be consistent with the county code. And so, but we're not part of the county, and, you know, we're our own little, unique little place over here.
Yeah, for sure.
And what I found it was interesting when we started reading everything is the one-ton. Well, okay, but it's one ton, or what is it, less than one ton? But most of them are one ton. So I think everybody is, from what I understand and listening to the conversation, I think on the the commercial vehicle, it's being suggested one ton or less.
I mean, I guess when someone says one ton, do they mean payload? Because payload keeps going. That's why the DOT uses the weight classifications for the gross vehicle weight rating. About class three goes up to 14,000 pounds. 14,001 pound is a class four. That's when you get into more like lift-back trucks, dawn trucks, those sort of things. I mean, there, I included a link to a website that has kind of pictures and stuff of things that might give an idea of. I have.
Do you want to reference your notes?
No, no. I'm saying the website, because I don't have the website up that shows kind of what a class three vehicle would be to see if, you know, using a moniker like that versus those old one-ton, three-quarter-ton, half-ton meant the payload number.
So you think that'll be better?
I think it would have less confusion in the future, because what's to say in 10 years, an F-450 can't haul eight tons around in its bed, you know? But that doesn't change the size of the vehicle. It changes the technology that we put into the frames, into the bed versus the size of the vehicle, which is, I think, what people are trying to avoid, is having a incredibly large vehicle sitting, you know, in that sense. So that was just in addition.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else?
So, Tim Daughtry, 1410 Keller Road. Add-on to discuss this argument discussed, and it's come up already. We need to make a designation between personal recreational use and business use, okay? We're talking about personal vehicles versus business vehicles. We're talking about personal recreational trailers versus trailer use for businesses. I don't think the code is the proper way to address business use for business vehicles. I think the zoning is the best way to address that. You come in and get a business license and running a business out of your house, there should be a list of items that you need to comply with to run a business out of your house. Number of commercial vehicles, number of commercial trailers, number of employees who would come to meet you at your house, delivery issues. All that should be separate from the code itself. It should be part of our zoning code, okay? And as a business operating, home-based business in our town, we need to address commercial versus residential and recreational use. I think it's very important, and I also think it's very important that we follow state codes when it comes to enforcing the, what we're doing about commercial businesses in our town, which is another separate issue entirely. Size, of course. I mean, I'm going to get a fifth-wheeled recreational trailer being put next to my bedroom, and it's not something I would enjoy, but it's going to be right outside my window. It's going to be within 10 foot of my windows coming out of my master bedroom. But Chris, who's going into my house next door, is a really good guy, and I don't see that as being an issue. It's his house. It's his property. It's behind a fence, okay? And the fact is, he can't meet the side lot requirement. It's impossible for him to meet it on either side of his house, because he's going to have that fifth-wheeled trailer on one side, and he's going to have a boat trailer on the other side, okay? He can't meet setback requirements for those trailers. There's no way to meet those setback requirements. It's impossible. From the design of his house, the way it's laid out, the pool in the backyard, there's just no other place to put the trailers. There's no way to do it. As for one-ton vehicles, I've been through this how many times before this council, okay? I've had a one-ton vehicle in this community for, as of June this year, it will be 19 years, okay? If you don't allow one-ton vehicles, we've got an issue, okay? I've had it here for 19 years. You haven't enforced the codes, and you haven't enforced the codes where it comes to one-ton vehicles, and you haven't enforced the codes where it comes to trailers. We are opening ourselves up to legal issues with the fact that we haven't enforced codes in this town, specific codes, and not just this code, okay? For many, many, many moons, there's inconsistency in enforcing the codes, okay? And I can't be any more honest than this. This has been very true for a very, very, very long time. If you're liked, you don't get violations. If you're not liked, you will get violations. It's that simple. How are we going to deal with sun setting to people who have these? If you're not liked, you will get violations. It's that simple. How are we going to deal with sun setting to people who have these violations already? Okay. You're saying, okay, well, they got a fence. How long are they going to be allowed to, to comply with this code? Okay. Especially if they've been parking these vehicles here for nineteen years. How are you going to address that? How are you going to address that? Because that's an issue. That's a huge issue for us going forward. Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Appreciate it, Tim. Thank you. Anything else?
Up here. And then this, I'm going to point out to you, okay? Because we haven't been enforcing this trailer ordinance. Things like this continue to go on in our town. Okay. And I've been looking at this for two weeks. Okay. Okay. I've been looking at this for two weeks. Okay. And the fact is trailer isn't parked on residents' property. That is Lake Clark Shore's property. Thank you very much.
Why don't you give this to, um, Mr. LaBelle? Any other questions or comments from residents? Welcome. Tell us who you are.
I am Debbie Moody from seventy five ten Pine Tree Lane.
I have two questions. Is there any requirement to park these vehicles on a hard surface? Or is it okay that they're parked on a lawn, whether it be behind the fence or not?
Mr. Scheck.
As I read the code, it does not have to be a hard surface, but it can't be overgrown with weeds or tall grass.
And then the other question I. Do we have a definition in the code for the carport? A roof structure attached to the main house? Or could somebody go to Costco and buy those fence poles and a tent covering and call that a carport?
I, I think they would run into other issues, uh, not just code. I don't think those are allowed due to the building standards.
I remember that there was an application coming for the council for Carolina carport. Am I right? Carolina carport that was allowed, but, uh, Mr. Scheck is looking at the answer for you, Ms. Moody.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Morty Milt seventy seven hundred Pine Tree Lane. The picture, the picture that Mr. Daughtry just gave us miles, um, the trailers aren't there for more than five days. And they're, they're not just one trailer that move them around. So there's not one trailer that's sitting there for any extended period of time. But if we're looking at other people's houses, we should be looking at the cleanliness of some people's houses and not what they store on their property for a few days at a time. Not going to throw any stones at glass houses, but some people need to look at the merit. Um, regarding the, the whole commercial vehicle thing, four fifties, three fifties, two fifties, one fifties. It's a pickup truck. It can be a recreational car, it could be a toy hauler, it could be an everyday car. For me, it's an everyday car. Drive a four fifty. You know, it's not marked, doesn't have any markings on it. Doesn't, nothing, no stickers, no nothing. As far as I'm concerned. Has markings on it. It's a box truck. I know there was one in town for a little while. Um, it's big, you know, labels and business stuff on it, whatever it is. I think that would be considered more of a commercial vehicle, commercial trailer such as such. I don't care about mobile homes or travel trailers and on the side of people's houses. I mean, we're a recreational town, boating, you know, camping, you know, look where we live. Um, I think more or less my concern is about cleanliness. I like clean house. I like driving around the new road. Now looking at a clean environment. I'm a clean person. I like to live around clean people. I think we can all agree that we like cleanliness. Everybody cares about the way the town looks, appealing its, its aesthetics. And I think that's really the main concern here. It's not about, you know, who's got their boat here and who's got their trailer here. I think it's, hey, how often do you use your stuff and let it, or let it rot? You know, I think there should be, I know it's hard to do, but I mean, we've, I think we've discussed this in the past about, um, having certain things in front of a residence for extended period of time, or it just, it just looks disheveled after a period of time, or if it doesn't move. But it's hard to enforce. And I, I guess that's why we have the setbacks. But for the most part, I think it's cleanliness. And I think that's really the, the point that I think everyone's trying to make here. It's not about what truck you drive or what boat you have, what travel trailer. It's about how you keep it. So that's, I think the point I really want to make.
I think you made it.
Perfect. That's why I have to say, but thanks, Tim. Appreciate you.
Thanks. Mr. Scheck, did you want to answer Ms. Moody's question?
Carport is defined in our zoning code, says a carport means a roofed area open on one, two or three sides, which is freestanding or attached to a building for the storage of one or more vehicles.
Gentlemen. Hang on just a second so we can all listen. You can talk later. Please. Charlie, go ahead. Repeat that real quick.
I couldn't hear you, Charlie.
Carport means a roofed area open on one, two or three sides, which is freestanding or attached to a building for the storage of one or more vehicles.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other audience comments?
I just want to say that I like this gentleman's idea on how to rate the trucks. I think that's a good idea. He seems to be very knowledgeable in that. The other thing I wanted to address is the signs on the vehicles and the trailers, is it already addressed in a code?
Tell us who you are.
Louise Brannenberg, eighteen ninety Carissa Road.
Thank you.
But I, um, the signs on, on trucks, trailers, cars is already addressed in, it is one thirteen, I believe. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I just reiterate that I'm against having more than one cargo trailer on a property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Scheck, I'll give you a minute to catch up. Any other audience comments? Is there any online comments? Emily?
No.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm going to have a question. Um, I can't find anywhere in the code, and I know that this was, uh, going to be thought of as well. Um, you know, when we talk about screening from view, uh, we talk about, you know, from your side neighbor, from the road. Some of us live on the water in the neighborhood. Um, does our, you know, my, my thoughts would be to keep it as it is now. Those, you know, just talking about from people driving around, you know, just as.
I think that was brought up at the last meeting, uh, last workshop, that, uh, some people said, if you're going to screen it from the, uh, from the road, you should also screen it from the waterway. Uh, I only heard one or two, um, people advocate that position.
Okay. I would like to leave it how it is currently, just because mine, mine are fully screened on both sides, but then I, I'm not allowed to put, you know, a fence across the back of my property. Uh, you know, and, uh, cause I'd live where South Florida Water Management owns the property behind me. So I can't even put that high of a hedge in certain sections of it without it being, you know, halfway up my, uh, property. So things like that taken or, you know, could be taken into account that, you know, not having to screen from the water.
Thanks a lot. Sure, Mr. Daughtry. Then I want to turn it on over to, uh, the council.
Tim Daughtry again, uh, signage on vehicles. Okay. So, uh, you need to understand there's very specific state requirements for me as a contractor for signage on vehicles. I'm required to have signage on vehicles with certain designation sizes and everything else. So the state mandates me and I violate that by not putting signage on my vehicle. Specifically in this town, these are commercial vehicles.
You told us that last time.
Residential place. I violate state regulations for that. Okay. And I kind of, if, when I get noticed by state people coming up on job sites and ask me where are my signature people, I try and explain it to them, but they have the right to cite me for that. Okay. By not having that signage on my vehicle. And it is mandated by state. I mean, Greg, is it true with your business too or not?
I was just going to ask you a question. Does it apply to the owner of the company?
Yeah.
Cause at my business, it does not. So if I'm the owner, I can drive whatever I want, but any of my other vehicles.
Bless you.
Be marked and there are requirements for size and lettering.
Yeah, I'm required to get.
But I, you know, I, as an owner, I can drive whatever I want, marked or not.
Okay. I, I'll, I'll relook into that from.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure if you looked at, I think the owner of the vehicle, cause you can have, you know.
But I'm not, the business owns my vehicle. See, that's the thing.
I understand, but you're the owner of the business.
Yeah, and I.
So I would look into that. I mean, I mean, it's free advertising for you. There's nothing wrong with people in here wanting to do business.
But the last time I got cited for that, I had.
By the state?
Yeah, by the state. I, I was fined a hundred dollars. I had very extensive conversations with them about that.
And my business is highly regulated too, so.
Very much so. Probably even more so than mine.
Yep.
Louise Brannenberg, eighteen ninety Carissa Road. Tim, in code one thirteen, if the state mandates that you have to have certain vehicle or certain writing, your contractor number or something like that, under our local code, you can have that.
Anything else on, uh, online? Emily, Mr. LaBelle?
No.
Sure.
Like to turn it on. If there's no further, uh, audience comments, we could go. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. You want somebody else to go first?
Mr. Rodriguez.
I kind of want to see his presentation. Right? If you don't mind.
Sure.
I've been going around. I talked to people, you're half of this and half of that.
Oh, we got it.
Do it properly. It shouldn't be a problem, but that's not always the way it works, it seems. And there's a couple of pictures in here that I know the neighbors. This is a very difficult situation. This is going to take some time because I that have feelings that just either can't be here or aren't here or, or don't want to say. So go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez, you see what you got there and we'll go.
Thank you, Mr. Freebold. Uh, I do, I did just want to, uh, take a second. Joe, Joe wrote a really nice email. It's very organized and it kind of delineates certain things. And, um, I was looking up, you know, the different classes today and, um, I, I think that that's an interesting area that we can explore. So with that, I want to make a huge gigantic disclaimer on this presentation. This presentation was, uh, done obviously before everyone got an opportunity to speak. It was done just as a proposal and it is not necessarily, um, you know, all encompassing of what I would consider a vote or, or otherwise. I'm utilizing it as a way for us to spark conversation and, um, and discourse. So let's all keep an open mind. With that, I hope it's somewhat educational or at least leads us in the right direction. I will say that Lake Clark Shore is obviously, we have a lot of uniqueness. We have a lot of different people that live here. And in trying to respect each and every single person, their wishes, desires and, and personal goals and ambitions in their lives. I think that we need to walk into this with an open mind. So with that being that far, whoever created this PowerPoint presentation used really tiny text, apparently. Code enforcement is a function of local governments performed that citizens consider important for accomplishing community goals, such as protecting property values and the environment. I think that we can all kind of agree with that. I spent a little bit of time on code enforcement and, um, there's a lot of things that come before us. And so one of the things that I learned through code enforcement was that the purpose is to gain voluntary compliance through education. And I think that if we're all on the same page and we all go into this to say, look, what is the real community spirit behind this? How can we satisfy the majority of people, um, and kind of have some sort of base level? I think that we're all going to be happy. Uh, oftentimes in a mediation, you always hear the best mediation is when everybody walks away upset. Either somebody paid too much or they accepted too little or, uh, some, something like that. So, uh, a couple of the quick key questions that, that I had, what is the back, on the sides? What about corner lots? We got into that. Paved versus unpaved. An issue that, that came up, somebody reached out to me and said, look, you know, gosh, I'd love to have a cement pad or, or a, uh, or pavers or anything to put, you know, my boat on top of, because it makes it easier to wash. It makes it easier to access and service and, and whatnot, even though there's no major repairs allowed. But it's obviously something that's going to keep that cleanliness. It's going to keep that safer, you know, your equipment safer. But that might not be allowed because of a drain field or a septic tank or whatever else, maybe buried lines. So that's important. So number permissible, we gotta, we talked a little bit about that. Is it the number of trailers or recreational vehicles in total? Is it by category? And is it, if it's behind the home or if it's screened, does it, does it matter? Right? So the challenges with the current regulation is that, you know, industry standard for size of recreational vehicle has evolved over time. We heard about this. Measurements are not easy to determine on somebody's property. So you can't go in there and say, hey, well, you know, you have a fifty four or fifty five point six inch trailer or something. I'm, you know, I'm obviously trying to bring some levity into it. It's really difficult to get somebody to go in there and, and, um, we don't want to be seen as, you know, nitpicking, right? We, we want a, a certain aesthetic and we want people to be able to, to do what they want to do within reason. And I think it's a really important point. You don't want to be parking a, a big trailer right next to someone's window where that's, you know, their bedwin, bedroom window. You want them to wake up in the morning, have some sun, sunlight so that they're a productive citizen. But, um, the ability to move these recreational vehicles to circumvent requirements, you know, are you able to now say, okay, well, it was on the left hand side of my driveway, but now it's on the right hand side? No, it, that, I don't know if that's going to work or not. Uh, and then obviously unique properties. I've had several people say, look, I'm, I'm on a pizza pie lot or I'm on this lot. I'm on a corner lot. How is that going to affect me? How is this going to really be determined? And we talked about the spirit of the town. We're a boating community. We're a hardworking community and we have a big mix of different vehicles. So categories, we talked about them. You've got all kinds of different things, boats and boat trailers, um, empty versus loaded and closed cars, enclosed cargo trailers. Utility trailers is a utility and a cargo trailer. Should they both be treated the same? Then you have a motorcycle trailer, which technically it could be open or it could be closed. Is that a utility trailer or is it specifically by purpose? RVs and travel trailers, there's obviously different classes of RVs and there's different classes of, of commercial vehicles as well. So with that being said, I had a couple of suggestions or different ways to kind of tackle this. Um, thank you very much to town staff. They had a nice little comparison of current codes. So I just utilized this for ease of use. And so we're all kind of talking about the same thing, speaking the same language. So the current says you need opaque, obscured or concealed behind a fence or hedge. I propose if the trailer or recreational is not behind a fence, it should be five or 10 feet behind the side of the home. Cause not everybody's going to be able to now go out and screen it. It, it may cause an undue burden for some folks. Some folks may have, uh, an access issue to be able to get in and out based on post or whatever it is, because they live on unique, uh, lots. So again, just a suggestion, folks. Um, and this was my terrible attempt. I'm using the laser pointer here. Oh, wow. The TV sucks it up, but, um, there is a fake little boat there on the side of the home that is, uh, set back. Did I lose that? Okay. It was out of order, but this is a picture, uh, with no fence, right? So assuming that there was no fence, uh, the picture on the left, what you see is a boat right out the property line or right at the, the face of the building, I should say. And then the photograph on the right is a boat that is hopefully set back five or 10 feet, just so that it's, you know, a little bit more hidden, right? What's interesting though, is that, and this is kind of hard to see, but this is an RV behind a chain link fence. So I think you have substantial compliance there, but you still see the darn RV. It's right there, right in the middle. For everybody to see. I don't think anybody contemplated that. Uh, and this was a Google picture. This is not in our neighborhood. I used a lot of Google pictures, so we're not alienating anybody here. Uh, boat or watercraft, boat or watercraft and trailer. So the current is more than one multiple, max length per each is thirty feet. Aggregate length of fifty five, this is a lot of math. Um, and so, you know, I grew up, uh, I was four year old. My dad worked hard. And, uh, two boats, there was a little lake boat that we would enjoy Lake Clark in, and then, you know, something a little bit bigger, uh, you know, to go to Peanut Island or go deep sea fishing. And, you know, as long as it fits, and I think Mr. Lopez brought this up, but if it fits, it ships. If it's behind your house and it's within reason, um, I think that that's, that's fair. We're a boating community. Trailer utility and or cargo. Trailer, utility, and/or cargo, so currently it's one, ten by twenty. Uh, you know, I tend to agree with some of the folks, that if you're gonna now start limiting cargo trailers, or put a size requirement on a cargo trailer, we're, we're really differentiating the, purportedly, a boating, a boater versus somebody that maybe is into, uh, race car racing. You know, and I know that a twenty-foot car, a twenty-foot trailer, isn't necessarily going to house a, um, a, a vehicle. So, uh, you have one enclosed cargo trailer, one open utility trailer. So if you needed to go and do some landscaping, or whatever it is, you can do that. Recreational vehicle, uh, you could have one max length, and these are RVs. These are the big, you know, Class A RV vehicles. I did a lot of research on, on the maximum length of forty-five feet. I couldn't really find anything bigger. I'm okay with dropping it off. And again, the disclaimer from before, let's all keep an open mind. These are just suggestions and, and talking points. So we have one, one RV, whether it be a, a Class A, B, or C. All right. This is the fun topic that everybody likes to talk about, commercial vehicle. So currently, it's one less. Less than one ton.
Yes.
Again, the designations are quite confusing, and I think that we should absolutely look into either the gross vehicle weight rating, or the GVWR, which also plays into the class categorization. But certainly, I think that one, one ton, or less, if it is, and we're just using one ton for the purposes of, of speaking, but maybe we should translate that into a class. If it is one ton, then no commercial signage, unless it's required, you know, by, by statute, which is a very simple DOT number. You also have the ability to put in temporary magnetic signs, um, that, that aren't out. But, you know, there's a lot of people that, that work in the neighborhood, and, uh, and they have the Ram thirty-five hundred, the F-three-fifties. Those are all one-ton trucks, including that van right there. So even if you're, I don't know, you're in private transporter limo business, and it's very nice, and it's washed and kept up, hypothetically, you wouldn't be allowed. So, uh, I think the purpose here is that you don't have a significant number of these commercial vehicles. I think that having a one-ton vehicle with lots of signage versus a one-ton vehicle, um, with no signage, there's, there's something to be discussed there. And my last slide, grace period, um, in the proposed ordinance right now, there is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I. So, those are my slides, what, uh, what some of the folks had, had mentioned, um, just in, in discussing this. Um, what is the time limit for something to be in your front yard? You know, a-again, growing up, boating or camping, or whichever side of the pendulum you're on, um, you know, if you're gonna go on that big, long camping trip that you always wanted to go on, or that big, long fishing trip, there's a lot of gear and a lot of things that you need to load in and load out of, right? And so, I remember it would take us, you know, a day or two, um, to get that camper ready. My mom worked really, really hard, and getting the plates and the, all the stuff, bless you. To get in, to get ready, the bed sheets, the, the clothes, all of, you know, firewood, whatever it is for camping. And, and I think it would be a nice way for us as a town to say, hey, I'm really happy to see that you're going on that camping trip, thirty-six or seventy-two hours, to allow that person to go and pack, and do what they need to do for their trip.
Let me interrupt.
Sure.
Three days, right?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yes.
Okay, done.
It is.
So, perfect, three days, that's great, because then, it was, okay. The setback, I had a couple of people call me and says, look, that, that five to ten feet, if you want that setback and no fence, it's really gonna have an issue. Base, or the front of the home, it's gonna have an issue with my house, because I can't park it there, and I have a unique lot. I think that on an individual basis, um, there could be some sort of variance. And it's, it could be similar to the speed bump thing, where you can get some of your residents, your neighbors, so that they have an input. They say, look, oh, I, I really don't want you to have this monstrosity of a XYZ type of vehicle next to me. Uh, also, what came to mind is safety, and, um, you know, by having something that's oversized, that's maybe too wide for your area. First of all, if you're not doing your own lawn, I know that the lawn company is going to really not like you to try to get in and out, or try to do anything in your backyard with, um, a smaller machine that they would normally do, uh, I think would, would hurt. But more than that, and I'm just assuming the worst-case scenario, if God forbid, there were an emergent situation with a, I don't know, I've got a power line in my backyard, with the power line, they need to get to a transformer, they need to service something back there. And you have, uh, no ability to get back there, because now both sides of your home are clogged with, you know, really large vehicles or large trailers, making it more difficult and dangerous to get in there. I think that that's an issue. You know, slide one, right off the bat, I started thinking to myself, well, I'm gonna have a problem, uh, at my house. This is not my house, but, um, or slide two, I'm sorry. Slide two, so imagine that the fencing in slide two were to be extended just a little bit more. The proposed ordinance, as it reads right now, it says, behind the front line of the house, and screened from view. So, assuming I were to put anything on my property where I currently have my gates, it's screened, but it would not be behind the line of the house. The prior owner, not me, um, created this fence to extend forward, outward of, of the front line of the home. So that's an issue. Industrial equipment, how do we feel about industrial equipment? Uh, that's not mentioned in the, in the code. You know, farm equipment, John Deere stuff, bulldozers, bobcats, do we, do we care to address that? I talked about that septic issue, where, you know, putting an improved surface, um, on, on your yard, or mandating that, would be very difficult. I know that that's not being proposed or discussed right now. And that's it, for now.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Okay, Mr. Rodriguez.
So, my understanding is, the, the pictures that were provided, those were not in compliance right now, but because of the moratorium, we haven't cited them. That's quite a fact. What I'd like to know is, the people who are not in compliance, if we could give them a note and say, you're not in compliance, could you tell us, would it be a hardship to come into compliance, and what do you think is the right way to store your property?
Well, since it's under the moratorium, it's not an issue whether or not they're in compliance or not. And if we go forward and, and change the code, uh, give them a grace period to say, or maybe it would apply to them, maybe it wouldn't apply to them.
Well, that's, that's why I would ask the question. I would like to just, like, get some input from some of these people. Now, I know a lot of these people, and I think a lot, they're not, they're not here tonight, and they don't come to, you know, meetings on Thursday nights. I like to hear, you know, I talked to a couple of people about, they just think it's ridiculous to have to put. Want to put, some people think it's nice to have a boat, to see a boat, because this is the. You know?
To see a boat, because it's a boating community. They don't have a problem. You're driving down the street, and you see someone has a boat on the side of their house. Um, I get that. Um, but then, you know, I guess it's not good to see something.
So, I think this, uh, issue, we do need to get it fixed, um, but the problem is, sort of Bobby's presentation, no offense, Bobby created more questions than. It created more questions for me than, uh, clarifications. And I think that's the problem that we're all battling with up here as council members, is, you know, this is just one of many, many ordinances that suffer from the same exact problem, um, of trying to balance everything that's right and wrong. I feel bad for residents who are on corner lots, or on properties that can't easily comply. And I really do think that should be taken into consideration, because they're just a basic house, like we've seen pictures here. And then there's people that, you know, how does a person on the corner lot comply? What do they have to do? And that's a substantial amount of work. They gotta put a fence up, they gotta do a lot of stuff. Um, every house here is unique. I think it's hard to find a code that kind of fits in, um, with everything, but I'm still open to discussing this. And I think as council members, we have to go talk to people, because obviously, uh, this isn't a great representation here tonight. I'd like to talk more.
Excuse us.
Excuse you. Twelve months.
Please. Let, let Mr. Rodriguez have an opportunity to express himself.
Yeah, um, so, now, I just, I just think, you know, I agree that this isn't a quick solution.
Anything else, Mr. Rodriguez?
No, thank you.
Mr. Freebold.
Charlie, when you go out into the real world, and you want a, um, industrial, or you need a, um, uh, for a business tax receipt, or for an occupational license, you can only put certain businesses in certain places. Now, Lake Clark Shores is not, or should not be, a place for industrial businesses. This is a residential community. I'm the first one to say, I bring a company vehicle home every night. I do it mainly because I'm lazy, and I don't want to drive another vehicle back and forth to my office where I do store everything. But this industrial stuff should not be allowed, plain and simple. I mean, that's just asking too much, in my opinion. Because, like I said, even for my business, to get an occupational license, I have to be in a certain zone, and there's a certain qualification that I have to meet in order to get an occupational license. So residential areas, and that, well, I, you know, there's no business markings.
No, no, what I was showing you is.
I don't know how they assume that, but still, this is not as simple as it sounds. And I agree, you gotta get out there and talk to people. This is a small representation of the people in Lake Clark Shores. And I've said it before, I, I'd much rather look at a boat on the side of the house that's not covered than a trailer of some sort. It may be wrong, it may be right, but, um, this is a boating community. To limit people, um, I'm like you, Bobby, I've got a boat for my grandchildren. I got a boat for my lake, I got a boat for my ocean.
I don't have any boats.
I'd have a bigger boat. But, so there's gotta be. But, you know, there's just gotta be a lot of more input from people, because you're gonna, like I said, you're gonna really open up a can of worms. Because a lot of those people that I see in here, and have trailers, and Charlie, let me ask this question. So we haven't been enforcing the code, or the code has been lenient, let's say. Because I know where, if you're light, you get, you don't get enforced, which is bubba mysey. If you aren't light, you get enforced. So, how do we address that if there's a lawsuit issue? Because it hasn't been enforced, and now we're looking at coming to a common ground, and trying to figure something out that everybody can live with.
That was the reason for imposing the moratorium, so that you would not enforce the code during the moratorium period. And you would use that period to develop a code, which you would then begin enforcing when the moratorium was terminated or expired. The key is that, once the new code is developed, and the moratorium is no longer, the town will need to enforce it uniformly. You do have the ability to have a grace period, but you will have to enforce it uniformly.
Comply.
Yeah.
Right.
Because some of them are harder than others, but some of them are pretty easy. Especially if you've been really paying attention and riding around and looking. Some of them are an easy fix. I'll be the first one to say, it's convenient for some, and it's inconvenient for others. And that, it's, that's not gonna change, regardless of what code gets enforced, or doesn't get enforced. Your property is your property. What you can do with it is what you can do with it. And like I just said, if I could have more, I would, and so would most people, but my property only allows for so much. So very limited on what I can do. So, that's a consideration for everybody within the town of Lake Clark Shores, not just council members, audience members, for everybody that's gonna be affected by this. And, and there, you know, if you've been riding around, there's a lot. A lot of people have a lot of different types of trailers, you know, water crafts, RVs, god love them.
Well, let's start tonight.
Well, what do you got?
Okay. I'd like to approach it, uh, where we're basically in agreement moving forward, so we can craft a code and move forward with a proposal, so Charlie can put together a, uh, proposed ordinance, so we can, uh, put it back before the council, so we can have some discussion. But telling, telling us all that it's broken, uh, and it needs to be fixed, well, that's fine. Now tell me how to fix it. So, uh, I want to address the issue, I'm gonna go for the easy one, the low fly, low lying fruit, if you will. And gentlemen, you have in front of you the, uh, parking of vehicles in residential districts, the current proposed. It was, uh, referenced by, uh, by Mr. Gonzalez. Let's go to the bottom. The commercial vehicle, I'm interested and I'm intrigued by the classification that was discussed tonight. Uh, I think we're all in agreement, from what I can tell from listening to y'all, that it should not be one, it should not be less than one ton. Uh, it should be one ton, and, or less. So I think, and then, help me out, Charlie, on this classification. If we have to reference, um, uh, DOT something, uh, teach us what needs to be done that puts us in that, uh, uni- universal, uh, umbrella.
And I'm not familiar with the DOT classifications, but that's something we can get familiar with very quickly. And as I hear, uh, the discussion, we're talking of one-ton classification, but rather than using the term or phraseology, one ton, we want to use the DOT classification for that same type of vehicle.
I, I think that, I think that that morphs into what, uh, we're gonna try and accomplish. Mr. Gonzalez.
DOT classifies class three. This class of truck has a gross vehicle weight rating of ten thousand and one pound to fourteen thousand pounds. So it would be fourteen thousand pounds and less. That would accommodate the F-three-fifties, the F-four-fifties, things that are easily, so class three and under, and I just want to look in, in the audience here, uh, to Mr. Lopez. Class three?
Yeah, I mean, the.
We check the box?
Yeah, well, to me, it didn't really matter. It was more of moving towards something that was based upon an actual classification that's out there, and not an arbitrary number of one ton, because that's a moving scale of what people consider. But, uh, I, I don't drive a commercial vehicle, but I know people that do. I don't, and their vehicles look fine. They have signage, it's a large cargo van. I don't know what class their vehicle falls into. It could be class four, class three, I think it's right around that area. Anything larger than that, like, there's a link, uh, in the emails.
Charlie, let's move forward on that, and, and see what we can do. The next one that, um, that comes to mind are the recreational vehicles. Currently, it's, uh, one recreational vehicle, um, maximum length forty-five. I didn't, uh, and the proposed, I think, is the same. I don't think there's a disagreement there. Can we check that box, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Next is the, uh, trailer, uh, utility and/or cargo. Uh, currently, it's one maximum height and length ten and twenty. I think we're okay there, but, um, I think the issue is, is it a box? Are you gonna have more than one? And I think what we've heard is, we don't want to have, I don't know how you classify a cargo trailer versus a box trailer. Is it synonymous?
There are two types of trailers, the utility or the cargo. The utility is a flatbed, the cargo is enclosed.
Can we say that in the code, that a utility trailer is a flat trailer?
Yes.
And it's not enclosed? And then, can we address the box trailer?
Yes.
And then, uh, from what I've heard is, you don't want more than one box trailer. Is everybody, are we okay on that?
Yeah. You say box trailer would be the same as cargo trailer.
Yes. Is that, is that synonymous?
That's my understanding.
Okay, will we make sure it's synonymous?
Yes.
Yes.
So, correct, there shouldn't be more than one ba- enclosed box cargo trailer. I'm envisioning the situation where you have somebody that wants, it has a, not a landscaping, but does landscaping, or has a golf, it's a golf cart trailer. Imagine a golf cart trailer, and you have an enclosed trailer, right? And so the golf cart trailer is a utility trailer. And so, what we're discussing right now is, and I just want to be clear, that would only be one?
One.
So you can't have an enclosed box trailer and something to carry your golf cart.
Sure, you're gonna. Sure, you're going to carry your golf cart in a flat trailer.
Right, but you're only limiting it to one, so.
Right now, the code only allows one. It doesn't distinguish between utility or cargo.
I think that that's an important.
Either, but you can't have one of each.
That is an important distinction.
Why don't we, why don't we?
That's why I suggested you got to spread commercial versus residential and recreation.
I think one each and, you know, the, the 20 feet, how are we going to restrict it to 20 feet when?
Is it better not to have a restriction of the, of the, maybe not to exceed?
Well, I don't want a 50-foot trailer.
If, if you were at Sebring tonight, because Sebring 12-hour race is this week, you would see cargo trailers that are enormous in length and.
Okay, I'm sold. I, I don't want to turn this into, you know.
So we have to have some designation. There are cargo trailers that have one axle. There are cargo trailers that have two axles. And there are cargo trailers that have three and four tre-.
But Mr. Scheck, I want to keep this code simple. Not everybody up here is going to be a lawyer.
And enforceable.
decipher the, the, the code. We need to make it simple and enforceable, as Mr. Lepello said.
Mr. Xiahou, I'm a lawyer and I, I can't understand half of this stuff.
Yeah.
I, I didn't bring mine. So.
Well, this issue will be vetted and brought before the council. I'm just trying to get this thing moving. It's like herding cats right now.
In the spirit of, of keeping things synonymous, it's to some extent. If we're going to go ahead and say recreational vehicle is 45 feet. Or, you know, there's, there's no cap on a boat, which, you know, I don't really want to touch that with 10-foot pole right now, but you know, why are we, I think it would be smart to say anything less than 45 feet. And, and so a 45-foot recreational vehicle would be okay?
Going to leave it to Mr. Scheck and Mr. Lepello.
And remember, it's one trailer.
And remember, we can't get back there and measure it.
So that's.
So that's an issue of enforcement.
It's enforcement. We can't get on private property.
Okay.
Can you view private property from the water?
Yes.
Yes.
How do you determine length from the water?
I understand. I'm just the point.
It's tough. It's super tough.
Just having a conversation.
Yeah, no, 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 totally. And this is all, you know, we want to flush this out. And it's tough in this format of like, I speak, they speak.
Yes.
Sure. I wanted to add one thing to that. One of the issues I was wondering is when you talk about utility trailer and or cargo and or whatever, we don't have a limitation as to whether it's that homeowner's actual trailer, do we?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So it has to be defined as that person's.
Has to be owned by the owner of the property or the resident of the property.
To that.
Yes.
What about the owner's business? That's, that's the question, because I looked at other codes and the other codes talk about owner and or owner's business.
Off the top of my head, I don't recall, but I think it's addressed. I just need to look at it.
Including the unlimited to, you know, and or?
Yes.
See if we can plug up the, the holes.
Sure.
Okay.
So is it one and one or just one cargo?
I don't want more. From what I've been hearing, you only want one box trailer. You don't want more than one box trailer.
And a utility flat trailer too?
One utility flat.
So one and one.
One and one.
But I think there needs to be some reasonable limit, outer limit as to how long we can make this. And, and you know, to Charlie, to Mr. Scheck's point, and if you don't put some sort of a cap, you're going to have a quad axle.
Mr. Gonzalez.
My suggestion would be less than 45 feet.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Thank you. There we go.
Not that you're going to be able to back it in.
I don't know if you're going to be able to back it in either, whether you're not going to have the setbacks or not. But I think the issue on the setback was a very good point. Now let's go back up to the screening or no screening.
Well, you're on boats.
One more time?
Boats is the next one.
I jumped over boats?
Yes.
Boats. Currently, it's, you can have more than one maximum length 30 feet, aggregate length 55. Throw this out there for consideration, no more than two watercraft and no length restriction. Talk to me. Yeah, you know?
I would say our, our code allows you to, sorry.
Well, I'm trying to get these guys up here involved.
Sorry.
Give me a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, gentlemen.
Well, no, I, I think two, I think two is a good idea. We're a boating community. I'm not sure if I like no length restriction though.
That's an interesting point. So based on the length.
I know, but the key here is let's, the answer is obviously, we don't want that.
Right.
Gentlemen, let's also appreciate the fact that you put a, put a, put a, a length on it, okay? Now I'm going to look over here to Mr. Lepello and say, go enforce it. He's going to say, how can I do that?
On the registration, it has a length on there. But, but one of the what, and it's really hard, and I apologize if, if we have to open it up to comments later on, I'll leave that up to the chair, but I can't. It's, it's hard to juggle. And, and I'm trying to say this in the most respectful way possible. Length is a, width and length is a, they're, they're proportionate and they correlate to each other when it comes to talking about boats. And so putting a 60-foot vessel back there is going to be very difficult because that's going to need what they call a very wide beam. And so I think that what's not on a registration is the beam of a vessel. And I, I wouldn't, I can't imagine that Lake Clark Shores would allow anything more than a 12-foot beam. That's a very large boat that has a 12-foot beam. The majority of beams on boats, the beam is the, is correct, the width of the boat, right? And so you're going to have setback issues, but also that's a very significant boat. You start getting a 12-foot beams or the width of the boat, the back end of the boat on, you know, anything north of like a 40, 45-foot boat.
Well, we can always put in all of these what-if horrible examples.
Sure.
I would like to keep it reasonable and, and keep it what we see around Lake Clark.
So in that same vein, you know, that length is going to be a function. And consider, you know, this is working in tandem with the setback as well. So what I'm trying to explain is, is that it's going to be very difficult for somebody to park this unlimited foot boat that's in our imagination right now because of that setback issue. They still need to have a certain amount setback from their property.
And, and, and staff is telling us, how are we going to enforce it? Because I can't measure it.
Right.
So address that issue, Mr. Gonzalez.
It's, it's the same thing with now the trailer thing. So why did we have a, why, why do we propose a 20-foot max length on the trailer? And I'm not trying to go backwards, but certainly measuring things is important. DOT recognizes it.
Didn't Mr. Mills address the, the council at one meeting where he said on the difficulty of, of measuring the length of a boat?
Yeah, it is difficult. I mean, the registration says it though. It's much easier than on a cargo trailer sometimes.
So you can access the registration online?
To registered motorcraft.
Thank you. I don't know what we're doing.
So.
How do we, how do we address this? Give me a number. So we, all of us can, can consider it.
I, I really don't think you want to consider allowing 45-foot flatbed trailers. A semi-tractor flatbed is 45 feet.
Well, so maybe it needs to be 30.
We've got maximum length of 20.
Yeah.
So let's not go backwards, Mr. Scheck. I'm trying to go forward.
He brings up a good point and I'm open to it.
I need, I just need to fix it. Tell me how to fix it.
I get that that's what we're all trying to do, Mr. Xiahou.
Okay.
We're all trying to get to the same place. And sometimes we have to have difficult conversations where we go forward and go backwards.
I enjoy conversations.
So I think, you know, 30 or 36 feet maybe is a tighter, you know, tighter thing for the utility trailers.
Look, you guys are boaters. I'm not. I just, you know, come along for the ride.
30 foot's a pretty good sized boat for a residential area.
And there's some people.
Well, the old code was 33.
Some people have big ones here.
If you'd like, is there anything else that you'd like to say under audience comments that I missed? Just give us an opportunity. I don't have an opportunity to talk to any of these gentlemen, except now. And I'm trying to understand so I can, we can put something together and direct staff. And once staff puts something together, then we'll all have an opportunity to address it at another meeting. But, but please, just, it, it's kind of difficult up here to, to comprehend all of this stuff. And we haven't even gotten to signage on, 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 on any of these vehicles. That's going to be another issue. How many people in town, you know, have signs on their, on their vehicles? And then according to the proposed, they said no signage. And all of my neighbors have signs on their, on their, their, their vehicle. Get back to the, to the length of the boat.
My, my point is, so my point is, is you might not have everybody that, that likes to go camping in a 45-foot recreational vehicle. Maybe that person really just wants to be out on that boat and it's just for whatever reason, it's a 45-foot boat. And now by limiting that, right? You've now, or, or if you limit that size on the boat or the cargo trailer, now we're, we're picking and choosing, well, it's okay that you like to camp. But because of the fact that you have a 45-foot boat, regardless of whether it goes on the lake or not, and a recreational vehicle doesn't go in the lake, it does drive on our streets, but you know, that's their recreational activity. So whether it be a boat, whether it be a cargo trailer with whatever the heck you want to put inside, ATV, side-by-side, cars, motorcycles, you know, whatever it is. I'm trying to create some sort of semblance of fairness based on the activity that these trailers, recreational vehicles or vessels accomplish.
And then, and the length is?
45 feet.
Is there anything else?
I have an issue with the multiple two. What about canoes?
Right.
Catamarans?
Excluding.
We did.
About cone up.
Our code allows you to bore three vessels at your dock that is specified in codes. What might be easier just to make it equate to that? Because if two jet skis are on one trailer, is that considered two vessels or one vessel? They have separate registrations. Then if you have, I'm just, I'm just saying maybe making it the same as what you can have at your dock is the same that you could have in your yard.
Well, I also know that, that there's many that have at least two jet skis. You know, so I don't want, it's a good point that you're with the, is a jet ski the same as a watercraft?
Yeah.
It is, yes.
Watercraft.
So with that in mind, you know, I would delineate jet ski, sea doos, whatever you want to call them. And.
Vessel trailer?
Pardon?
A vessel trailer?
Or just, what I'm trying to suggest is we identify the issue, not just put it on, under one general category. Just identify it, you know, two boats, but no more than two jet skis or sea doos. I don't know how the, the generic identifier is.
PWC.
And it's personal.
Personal watercraft. That's what they're called.
So a limit of two is fine with you all?
So that, that's, that would limit, and I apologize, that, that would limit now. So if you have two personal watercrafts, which are under the umbrella of vessels, that's it. You only get two, two watercrafts.
But if you have.
Two vessels, two, two jet skis.
I like, well, see, now you say jet ski.
That's a brand. I'm sorry. It is a personal watercraft, a PWC, but they're two, those are two independent vessels.
That's two plus two.
I'm just. Bobby.
Sir.
I'm not a water guy.
We, a lot of us are, Bob.
Okay. I'm trying to make sure that we don't create more of a problem.
I agree.
And I'm trying to be understanding of our neighbors that have two jet skis. And I know it's a, it's, you know, just like a Xerox copier, okay? So whatever those identifiers are to come under that umbrella, I think should be separate from a boat.
All I'm trying to say is the way that you're explaining it would allow somebody to have two vessels and two PWCs. Does that make sense? Or is the spirit of what we're trying to implement one vessel, two PWCs, which are essentially two watercraft trailers?
Personally, I would go with the two and the two, as long as everything is behind the front line of their, of their house.
Fair enough.
Okay. I don't care how many they, personally.
Sure.
But at the same time, I want to be respectful of our neighbors, you know, and their, their peace of mind. And let them enjoy their neighborhood and let them enjoy where they're living.
I'm all for more is better. I'm just trying to clarify so that we don't run into the issue where it says, well, you only said two vessels.
I want to make sure we.
So I want, what you're saying, what you're saying, to be clear, is two boats, two jet skis, that's three trailers. I just want to be clear with what we're discussing.
Actually, you're talking about five trailers.
No, I did not. It's not five. Technically, you can have an individual personal watercraft on two separate trailers. Yes.
Mr. Daughtry, let us have an opportunity to talk.
Box truck plus a utility trailer. Okay, that's five trailers. That's five trailers plus an RV.
Mr. Daughtry, give us an opportunity to chit chat up here, please. Charlie? We're going to need to be guided by your, your, your drafting.
I understand.
Okay. Mr. Lepello, but further input.
I just need, I think we just need two and one or two and two. And we'll come up with the wording.
Have you seen the personal watercrafts with four on one?
Yes, yes. So I'm not saying the limit. I'm just saying we need, we need to know the limit.
Out there, food for thought.
I have an idea. I, I have an idea that I think may, may accomplish it. I may have a solution. Let's talk about solutions.
Let's talk about fixing it.
So with respect to vessels, everything that we're discussing falls under the purview of vessel. What I understand, and this is, I'm just trying to clarify and solidify what we're talking about, is currently what's on the table and what we're discussing is two boat-style vessels and two personal watercraft-style vessels. A maximum of three tray maritime or vessel trailers. So that would allow you to have the situation where you have two vessels on independent trailers, two personal watercraft on a tandem single trailer that will be excluding somebody that has two vessels on two independent trailers. And the person that's going to exclude is going to be the person that says, well, I have two personal watercraft and they're on independent trailers, which would now be four trailers. And I'm trying, I'm a visual person, so I'm trying to envision this. Two boat vessels, right? I'm trying to word it. Two personal watercraft, maximum of three trailers.
And how much do you think that's going to adversely impact the community?
How many people do you know that have two maritime, two boat vessels? I don't think it will because I don't, I just, I don't think it will because I'm trying, that's, I'm striking the balance between a guy that's got two boats and two jet skis versus a guy that's got two boats, two jet skis on two independent trailers. I'm trying to, you know, now the only thing that that person would have to do is to say, look, stick those two jet skis on one trailer. I'm trying to make everybody happy.
If that was the case, I'd be out of business. Can we move forward to the next one? Mr. Lepello?
Just two, two or two and one? That's all I think we need, right?
Yeah, all right.
Two, two, maximum of three trailers. Of three of those, right?
Well, remember, these are all just proposals. We're going to vote on it and have further discussion at the council meeting.
Okay.
Two, two. Got it.
Let's go to screening. The current code calls for opaque, obscured or concealed behind fence or hedge. What's from what I've heard from my neighbors, basically, put it behind the house, put it behind a fence, but the fence not, does not necessarily need to be opaque.
I mean, I, I kind of like that idea. I think you can have an individual choice if you want to.
Absolutely.
Make it opaque or not. I mean, I prefer people not to. Make it opaque or not, I mean, I prefer people not to see what I have on the side of my house. So I put the slats in the, in the fence and you can't see the boat trailer. Um, but I don't think it necessarily needs to be a requirement because. I don't see a problem with some of these not in compliance where you just see a boat. On the side of someone's house behind the property line. I, I don't, I don't think it's a problem in a boating community to see a boat. It's on the side of someone's house.
Mister, okay, so if you're talking about a boat, then where does that take you? If it's not going to be opaque with a. Utility trailer or a cargo trailer or?
That'd be behind the.
Can we distinguish Charlie between the two permissively?
Distinguished between the two of what?
Vessel versus cargo trailer.
This one right here.
What has to be screened and what doesn't?
You got this guy right here.
Yes, you can.
That has a cargo trailer that's on the side of the house that the ruts through the grass.
Yeah.
Through the, the, uh, easement, there's no covering or anything like that.
And I think you're looking at slide thirteen.
Cargo trailers, box cargo trailers have to be screened.
You know, I think you're opening up a can of worms there. If you're gonna do it, it's either you are or you aren't.
But he says, but we think we can do it, we can legally do it distinguished.
So the people I've talked to that have already have opaque, whereas their feeling was is that. We didn't even know there was anything different. This is what we were told we had to do and we did it. And now they're saying it doesn't have to be done. And I'm like, well, that's the purpose of why I'm here to talk to you, to see what you want. This neighbor on the left-hand side is probably going to appreciate that he doesn't have to look at that every day. I know that neighbor very well. And I can tell you, he will appreciate not having to look at that, so. You know, I agree, I think people are very visual, very aesthetic, they see and they're visualized stuff. There's nothing, I don't know, if you talk about all these toys and then people are gonna have a hardship to put up a fence. If you got all those toys, y-you can swing a fence. My opinion, um, since we're, you know, I'm not saying one way or the other, but that's my thing.
Mister.
Fence is not a bad thing or something, you're not gonna put a hedge in front of that.
Mister LaBella.
Well, if, if you can't decide on a regulation, always remember that you should try to under-regulate. Because you can, oh, you can put it back in two years from now, but you shouldn't over-regulate and then go backwards. Does that make any sense to you all?
Yes.
So if you, if you're in between making a fence, a requirement or a screening a requirement. You don't have to do it and try it for two years and see if that's a big problem.
And address it after the fact.
Right. But that's just under regulating versus.
So then are you gonna say that in this same slide, that this resident here on the west side? Can he leave his vehicle parked to that trailer as he does? And then the person on the east side? Then view that, or is that trailer gotta be deposited there, truck moved into the driveway?
Well, I feel it, it should be behind the, the building line for sure and.
But not the truck doesn't stay attached to it.
Right.
Okay, good, well, that's, that's more food for thought.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, put it in your, put it in there, but we can address it. Probably that should be the only thing on the agenda.
Cause there's another place right over, I think it's Beta. Um, he's got a boat, he's had it there for years and years and years. It's technically on the side yard. But it's not behind, not behind the building, not behind the property line.
That particular vessel would not harmonize well. With the current, with, with what is proposed, and, and I'm just pointing something out because it is not kept in a clean fashion. There's mold and mildew all over it and it doesn't move.
That's a, that's a maintenance issue and that should be a, a different part of the code, that you should maintain your property.
These pieces, when you're talking about distinctive pieces of property in the town of Lake Clark Shores, they're all over the place. And that happens to be one of them also, where he technically could be in compliance, it's on the side. But if you add that it's gotta be behind the structure, that changes his whole game.
That's an excellent point. Uh, many people might feel differently about the front yard not being screened or fenced. But you might feel differently about a, a corner lot being screened. So, and you can make that distinguish, uh, you know, you can make that difference in the code, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
So you can say the side yards, a corner yard, you don't want to see in a backyard and see every, everything somebody has in their backyard.
Right.
So you can have that requirement of having that screened, but the front doesn't have to be screened and look at it in two years from now.
So we're also gonna address the issue on the corner lot? Or it's the staff's recommendation?
That would be my recommendation, that's the side, the side yards should be screened.
Mister Reddick.
Consol, uh, Robert Frost once wrote, good fences make good neighbors.
Let it be written, let it be done.
Can I ask you a question?
Pardon me, I can't hear you.
How wide do you think this room is from those glass windows to this wall?
Two, four, six.
Thirty-five feet.
And you want to allow a forty-five foot utility trailer in somebody's side yard? It would be longer than this room or the length of this room?
So it begs the question, do we still allow a forty-five, and this is the exercise, folks, a forty-five foot Class A motorhome. That's a, that's forty-five feet, folks.
Right, and it's big.
It is very big. And there's lots of them, there's lots of them in, in, lots of them in the neighborhood.
There are properties that can handle that here, you know.
So, you know.
But I feel like you also open up another can of worms if you say, hey, this guy's got an awesome piece of property, he should be able to do this, but. Yours isn't so much so.
So let's discuss it, let's, let's bring down the trailer, cause we're distinguishing now something that is an RV, right? And that utility trailer, so do we want to consider something smaller?
Well, isn't that a vehicle?
What?
It is.
It is a vehicle, correct. So I think it's appropriate to reduce the amount. A- a- again, all of this is for discussion purposes, right?
Yes, it is.
So let's, again, my disclaimer was keep an open mind.
Recreational vehicles were costing just as much as the house.
Right, well, they, they still are. There's multi-million dollar.
Give us, give me a minute, Mister Brandon.
So, so the flat trailers, right, that you would possibly put big equipment on should be less. Utility trailer. So.
Mister LaBella, staff.
It, it has to be enforceable, I mean, again, how are we gonna measure these things?
Is it by axle, would that be better? Is it by weight? What's on the registration?
I don't know. Is, can y'all give us a minute and then I'll, I'll give everyone an opportunity after we're done. After we're done, I'll be more than happy to, I'll be more than happy to allow additional audience comments. Just let us get through this, please. Thank you very much.
I mean.
And you can't, uh, I'm surprised you can't access it through the D M P.
You, you might be able to, right?
Uh, the, we may be able to do that, but on boats, we can run the F L number and get the length. And trailers say the same thing.
Other boat. So yeah, thank you. Your recommendation?
So in terms of a utility trailer, are we gonna treat utility trailers and cargo trailers by length? And just kind of a question. And if we treat them by length, do we treat them as the same length?
I like the code the way it is right now. The forty-five feet for the RV is allowed and then the twenty feet for the cargoes.
So the, the twenty-foot trailer is not going to allow somebody that wants to go and put a car in there?
Well, you can go twenty-five feet, but nothing forty-five feet on a trail.
Fair, no, no, fair, and that's, that's why I wanted to, I've put it out.
Doesn't have to be.
It sounds like a ridiculous number and it is, but I want to make sure that we spurred discussion.
It doesn't have to be the same, that's my point.
Okay, all right, so I'm, I'm utilizing these numbers and I hope everyone sees that. Remember my disclaimer, I said, let's keep an open mind, these are all for discussion purposes, so. We do have a pain point at forty-five, good, we've, we've learned something from this. So twenty-five feet, Joe, on your recommendation for a utility trailer. And a cargo, and a enclosed cargo trailer.
My point is they don't have to be the same and a lot of these RV parks are like RV vehicles are grandfathered in. So I would hate to hurt our residents, um, so. Put another measurement or maximum length on the, uh, cargoes. Twenty-five feet is fine. Are you okay with that?
And, and the reason why the, the numbers are important, I was looking at. The size trailer that I would need to put two golf carts on is twenty-four feet.
Cargo trailer.
Uh, flat trailer or cargo trailer.
You could put it inside of a cargo trailer.
You couldn't.
Yes, you could.
But it's twenty-five feet to put two golf carts in.
Have we moved along with regard to the, uh, the screening?
Yeah.
And the, uh, the proposal, you're okay, Mister Shek?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right.
No problem.
And the proposed, um, um. The code as it is right now, all of our neighbors that have, um, vans. Uh, it, I want, I don't want to misspeak, uh, utility, uh, just like, um, where'd he go? Um, Mister Rossi. He has, uh, he has signs, don't want to, uh, impact these, these people. Um, my next door neighbor, uh, Maury Lecter, he got, he's the, uh, uh, the home medical supply. He's got a, uh, his signage is on the, on, on his vehicle, don't want to hurt him. Um, I don't want a guy that's got a pickup truck and puts a sign on it. Uh, we're gonna, we're okay on, on leaving that alone.
What is the current, um, code on?
Is it more than one ton? Is that gonna dovetail into that classification?
I believe it's more than one ton and a sign, correct?
That's what I.
That's my understanding, yes.
I don't want to hurt the.
Both.
Well, we're, we might be having homes selling for more than a million bucks around town, but I still think we're. You know, a nice middle-sized class community and I don't want to, I don't want to hurt anybody. You know, I, I moved here because it didn't have an H O A. I don't want to start acting like one. We okay?
I agree, I mean, the, the signage on the, on the, uh, vehicle is related to that person at the house. Has to be their business or somebody they work for. And some people complain that, you know, hey, you've, you've gotten, so, you know, you're purposely parking someone else's vehicle at your house because they can't do it at their H O A.
Well, I know the guy down the street on Westlake, uh, the oldie station, I don't have an issue with that.
All right, because he drives that for work.
Don't have an issue, I don't think that's offensive. All right, what did I miss, gentlemen?
Okay, I, my, on this proposed ordinance for discussion purposes only, want to be very clear. Under sub A, it says parked or stored behind the front line of the house and screened from view. So just to be clear, I would technically be. In violation.
We're, I think we're eliminating screen.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the front, not on the side. And the corner lot.
Something else, it said here, um. Actually, we addressed the capacity. And just to clarify, what is proposed for discussion purposes only under sub B? Two. Um, it talks about a commercial vehicle must be parked. Says here, uh, said commercial vehicle shall not be required to be parked behind the front line of the house. Or screened from any adjacent road and from adjoining residential property, but must be parked within a garage or carport on the driveway. We're doing away with that, right? Okay. We have the grace period of six months.
Yes.
Still gonna maintain that, um, area of the parking and all the vehicles. Maintaining clea- clean, neat and presentable manner? Are we gonna have any issues with subjectivity on that, Mister Shek?
You always have that issue.
What, what is clean to you is?
To make that decision.
And, uh.
At least we're putting a positive spin on it, Russ.
Yes.
All right. And again, um. You know, this was for discussion purposes, it was input and, you know, please send us your feedback. If, if I got something wrong, or if I misspoke, or you wanted to see something different, email me, please, call me, please.
All of us.
It called, well, just not at the same time. Um, but it's, you know, it's, we're not always gonna get it. Or say the exact right thing in the heat of the moment when we're discussing, I, you know, I got pretty passionate in talking about boats and whatnot and. Um, I just want to make sure that I'm, we're all doing the right thing for, for everybody, so.
Mister Vice Mayor, we have one more question. Can you bring that picture up?
Yuli, can you put?
Multiple vehicles, um, is there any issue with this picture?
Yeah.
Does everybody live in the same house? I think you, wasn't it an issue that you can have your commercial vehicle with signage? So it has to be registered or owned by the per, person that's reg, that's living in the house?
Or his company, so let's say he's the, the principal owner of that company and he, they're all on.
And all of his kids work for him.
So you have to have.
Possibility.
Right, yeah, I've always said it, you know, you've got one commercial truck with signage, more power to you, amen, you're, you're working hard. You've got two businesses, good, it's growing, maybe it's, you know, a husband, a wife or a couple that.
The issue is, is.
Two. Three, you know, you're expanding and you're at a point where you should probably have a, have another site.
I can agree with that if you have two. One is fine.
No, no, but.
Two, this is a residential.
Oh, I agree, I, I agree, but this is like, this is already to the outer limits of.
Said, if all these people with all these toys, if their businesses are that bad, something's up. And there comes a responsibility when you have all the toys. Plain and simple.
And we have one picture out of fifteen hundred homes.
But there may be others, that's the problem, I mean, I've seen homes that have had multiple vehicles parked in front, or commercials, I mean, and. And the question is, I mean, is that unsightly? Is that, I don't know.
Well, it, it just so happened to be there when they went by and took a picture, is it there every day? I, I don't know, they, I, I know that house too. But I think the issue is.
We've got a wide variety of perspectives on that.
We should be guided by common sense, we should be guided by, uh, the, the concept of voluntary enforcement on code enforcement. And we should, uh, and through education, and we should also appreciate the fact that, um. It has to be simple and enforceable. Anything else, gentlemen? I promised the, uh, audience that I'd let y'all talk. Is, would anybody like to add anything else, Miss Brandon?
Please, Brandon Burke, eighteen ninety, Chris Road, I'm forgetting my address. I just want to understand something. So you can technically have a twenty-five foot enclosed cargo trailer. A twenty-five foot open utility trailer. Two boat trailers unlimited. A jet ski and a forty-five foot camper on one property. Is that right?
That's your hypothetical?
I can have that.
The, um, one that's behind the, the front line of the house.
Okay.
Yes.
We have a couple of semi trucks. There's one, I think, on Carissa, as you come in on Far East Hill, there's another one that parks in the apartments on Hayden. Is that a separate code, the, the semi trucks? Is there?
They're not allowed.
They, they're not allowed, it's, it's.
Okay.
That would be under the, the class and category.
It's larger than a class.
They park there at night when code enforcement isn't on duty and by law, they have to see it.
No, that red one's over there all the time.
I know exactly which one you're talking about, I see him, I agree with you, they shouldn't be parked there. But if, I don't know if the officers chief are able to write code. But if the code enforcement officer, whether it's Dana or Eric, whoever it may be, doesn't see it. And it's gone the next day, we've had that discussion also. So I agree, they shouldn't be allowed to bring it in there and park at night and get up at six A M and leave. That's unacceptable.
And I just want to understand, oh, I'm sorry.
How do we fix that?
The fence, you're gonna have to have a fence between two properties? No.
Only on a corner lot.
Only on a corner lot. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Sanchez.
Eighty-three sixty, Westlake Drive. Uh, one thing that's missing off of that list is, um, the view, um, from the lake itself. Because to me, and I think many of the residents that are here. If you're on the lake and you're on a boat, even though it's your backyard, it should probably be somewhat treated like a front yard in a way. So a lot of the things that we're talking about here, um, aesthetically, and I'm all about sex, so some people are neat, as this gentleman that was here are clean. But everyone has a different variation of what's considered clean. So there's a boat in the backyard, you've got your fence, you've got everything, but it's growing.
And you're, I, I think you're the fourth person that brought that up of, out of all of them. It, we, we did, it was mentioned. It was mentioned.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I'll look to the staff to make their recommendation, but I think, um, I have a funny feeling they're gonna say if it's not broke, we're not gonna fix it.
I was just mentioning, cause it wasn't on the, just from another.
It was discussed. Well, my, uh, my assistant over here, he ran out of paper.
Oh, we just got on the.
I squeezed it in.
There you go.
He got it in there. And, uh.
But if it's.
Disappreciate all the things that the town council does and for the betterment of our community and it's not easy, but also not everybody's gonna be happy.
That's true.
It's, 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 and then there's reasons why we're here. A lot of the codes that were brought here, as I brought up, this town started in nineteen fifty-seven. And we took the Palm Beach County Code Ordinance and prior to this town even starting. So a lot of what's been going on now, um, obviously is code enforcement. And when the code enforcement is enforced, now all of a sudden, everything's in, in, in an uproar. And I'm just concerned after this is all done, and I'm saying this cause I am vice chair of the Code Enforcement Board. And I know what's coming down the pipe.
Thank you.
I got a big agenda.
Jerry, your job is way harder.
It's gonna be.
It's.
And, and, you know, the one thing that's unique, my wife and I didn't move here not to be an HOA, just like you said, uh, Bob. And on an agreement, the difference here is that our code enforcement is delivered by our law enforcement officers. So this one has a little bit more teeth. In, in, in one way, but I think we also need to think, what kind of city do we want to live in? There's many here in Florida. I will, and not to put, I have tons of family there, not to pick on, I've just been there and we lives there, but do we wanna be Hialeah, Florida? Or do we wanna be the village of North Palm Beach in, in our town aesthetics and things of that sort? So we really need to come down to really, what, what are we looking to beautify or keep? And now a lot of these homes are going, are racing up. I'm, I understand middle class, I understand. But I think there's a certain standard that all levels of social economic agree on the beautification and, and aesthetic, so.
Jerry, if I may, I think, uh, you brought up very important points and I think that trying to harmonize what, what you're saying and then also keeping it in mind. You, you touched on it. We need to have a code that is uniquely ours. It is uniquely Lake Clark Shores. And so to take where you're going and your ultimate goal, and, and that's the final destination of the perfect code. But also balancing and tempering with, uh, tempering it with what Mr. LaBella was saying, say, look. Use a big word, tablarasa, you know, kinda clean slate, and that's what we're trying to do to harmonize all this. And I think that by erring on the side of caution, Mr. LaBella is saying, look, leave it somewhat open and then start to restrict things in the future. Remember, this is just but the beginning. And so if there are issues that come before council, that is certain, we can add on to the code. So that we can uniquely, and, and the thing that came to my head was, we don't wanna use a blunt instrument. When we really need a scalpel or, you know, something that's a little bit more surgical for us, because we have such a unique situation. So I think that we're in the right direction, hopefully.
I'm, I'm not knocking, and I, I just taking all aspects and driving around, uh, living in Florida now for thirty-five years in all three counties. So I've seen my shares of, of different towns and I used to live in HOA and with Weston, but, uh, um, one thing, Chief, I think that's a great point that the gentleman brought up about the semi trucks. I mean, that's, it's six AM, I've seen that and, and, and going, and how do, that would be a great thing. How do we handle those individuals that repeatedly?
There's one that parks over on Laurel too.
But isn't that a ticket?
And we brought it to the, uh, to their attention. I think Ms. Schmidt brought it to, uh, to our attention at a council meeting and I believe they took care of it.
Yeah, and I don't want people to think we haven't been enforcing the code.
No, no.
We wrote a hundred and thirty, um, notices, compliance notices, uh, last month, and I think it, it's gonna be over two hundred. But I have to be careful, like, I, I can't overwhelm the town staff, cause we used to average about thirty, forty or fifty, but everybody wanted more code enforcement, so management decided to put on a full-time code enforcement officer, and I think you met him. And he's certified, so that's what, he comes in every day and works on it. And one thing to let you all know that, uh, where Dana had a problem, she was doing numerous jobs and we've got half a dozen criminal investigations going on. But, uh, she's able to work on now, finish up on a couple of them. I, I, I think it's gonna be a lot better down the road that, uh, the enforcement and, and, and having this done properly. But we do, we have cited the tractor trailers and we cite them.
But it's that, um, well, it's, it's, but it's not also a.
No.
Breaking or, or.
No, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a form like you would get for a violation where if it's not corrected, you go before the code board.
Okay.
Then when they get up in the morning and go to work.
So it's not like a parking ticket, but from police, yeah, being that you'd have to go to court.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Just curious. Gentlemen, thank you for all the time you put in for our town.
I just want us to be like Lake Clark Shores, not.
Bob invested here.
We, we do have one comment.
I was gonna, uh, uh, my note here says online.
Okay.
Uh, Mike Bretta one. Yourself muted? Can you unmute yourself, please?
Well, we're waiting for Mike to, um, is anybody else in the audience have any questions? Yes, Ms. Brandon Burke.
What are, why don't we consider? Like the, the people that live here with their boats, we have to have a tag. So you guys already know what boats we have, I, I think, right? I mean.
No, you only have to have your boat registered if you're gonna use the boat ramp.
Ramp, okay.
In order, you can store your boat here and you do not have to register with the town.
Okay. Well, let's go to that house on Limmar and, and Florida Mango. There are four boats. How do you know if they're registered to that house or not? If we're not taking, if you're not making people put in an application like we do for our golf cart, not an application, but we have to register our golf cart, so you know.
You don't have to register your golf cart here either.
We don't?
No.
I thought we have that tag.
Well, you register with the state or you register it here.
Right.
The reason we did it to allow you to register it here was to save money for the residents.
Oh.
But that limits your usage on that golf cart.
Right.
So the streets.
Right.
You can only use it here. You can only use your golf cart if you're registered in Lake.
If it has that Lake Cart tag.
Lake Clark Shore. But if you go and you get a state registration, you can drive it wherever you want.
But why?
Safety compliant.
Why wouldn't we though, I mean, have the people just send in, okay, I have a sixteen-foot boat, I have this, I have that. And, and so that code enforcement could enforce it if it were over the limit.
I think that's Department of Motor Vehicle.
Well, there are towns that do it. There are towns close by where you have to register your.
Where's that? I'm not aware of that.
North Palm Beach.
Huh?
More, North Palm Beach.
Register your boat with the cap.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in their code that you have to tell them what size boat you have and.
And if you're gonna use that launch?
No.
You know where the launch is in North Palm Beach?
I don't know where it is, but I know.
But I'm just.
But in their code, I've read their code.
Do that?
I've read their code.
In my eyes.
We don't, we definitely don't do that.
Yeah, I.
No, but in North.
I'd have to look in.
I'll look into.
Yeah, North Palm, I think.
I'll be calling that town hall tomorrow morning.
There is a Nor, Village of North Palm Beach. It is called the Boat Recreational Vehicle and Trailer Registration for Residential Lots in the R-one and R-two zoning districts.
Is it?
Under.
R-one and R-two districts?
Under code section eighteen dash thirty-three.
What does it say?
I'm, do, how about I, how about I send it to town staff? They can look at it. Um, but it goes into defining a boat, a recreational vehicle and a trailer. And then it says here, section one, I'm not gonna bore everybody, but section one, requirements for property storage. Right? And it goes into thirteen different things, including keeping your boat and recreational vehicle clean and neat. It references several different sections. It says fees. Owner shall pay the village ten dollar for a one-time boat and RV registration fee per property. Only register if you meet all of the eligible criteria listed above. Uh, section three, it asks for owner and equipment information. Interesting that they say equipment. And it gives you space here to register with the town, one, two boats, two trailers and a reg, and a recreational vehicle. It is notarized at the bottom.
Anything else online?
Which?
Mike is, is still self-muted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike, any data?
Would anybody else like to say anything? Did we address all of your issues and wanna make sure?
I'll address this.
I didn't wanna cut you off. Okay.
Thank you.
No, no problem. I wanted to make sure everybody's okay. All right. Anybody else?
I'm all right, okay.
Okay. I would like to say thank you to, uh, staff in particular and, uh, to my, uh, fellow councilmen. Very lively and interesting conversations. Mr. Gonzalez, thanks for your presentation. I think it helped.
Um, I think you did an excellent job.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's what I get paid to do. The chair will entertain and will recognize.
So moved.
Let it be written.